Thank you. So at this time, as we begin our regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting, I ask that you will please join me for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will stand, please for the invocation. Father God, we just thank you again for this day and this opportunity to serve and to do what is good for our communities. God, we just thank you again for being here in the presence. We thank you for those that are serving. We thank you for our citizens as well. We do ask for peace throughout this land and that we will continue to do what is good in your sight. In all the other degree, in Jesus' name, please say amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So at this time, we now call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We do have a couple of announcements to make. The planning and zoning item, which was advertised for this meeting, has been postponed by the applicant, and that is MC MDP 1903, which is GDCI Georgia of Atlanta requesting a modification to a master development plan located on the northeast and northwest corners of the intersection of Revere Drive and John Williams Parkway. Again, that's, and that was in District One, and that has been postponed. We also have an agenda item 12A regarding the junior Board of Commissioner. That item has also been removed from the agenda at this time. So we call for, are there any other changes or revisions to the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Thomas, yes?
I would like to have item nine table into the next available slot for one of our meetings for planning and zoning.
Okay, and that is item...
Nine.
Okay, yes, nine, okay, all right, very good, actually it's nine A. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is that nine A?
Yes, it is.
Okay, very good. Okay, we've got that change to the agenda as well. Are there any other changes or revisions at this time? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the agenda with those changes just stated.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Thank you. The agenda has been modified as noted. We're now moving to our next item, which is coming from our Stormwater Department, and there are actually three of those, and we'll begin with the first resolution inviting Mr. Rocky Romero up to discuss the resolution to approve the purchase of software from Digital Map Products to track stormwater inventory and inspections. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair, and I'm Board Members.
Good evening.
Good evening. The Henry County Stormwater Department is required to provide an annual report to Georgia Environmental Protection Division. Currently, the Stormwater Department has an obsolete software to track the stormwater digital inventory and also the MS4 inspections. Stormwater has received a cost proposal from Digital Map Products for updated software. Digital Map Products is a sole source vendor for this software. The first year cost of the software is $95,500. Thereafter, the cost is going to be $34,020 per year. This software product will provide a better management tool to track stormwater inventory and MS4 inspections as required by Georgia EPD. Funding for the software is available at the Stormwater Budget. I'll take any questions.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, the resolution passes unanimously. Okay, you may proceed to the next resolution, which is a resolution approving the emergency drainage replacement for Hempfield Road.
Yes, Chair, Henry County Stormwater Department has identified the drainage replacement for Hempfield Road as an emergency.
And can you speak up just a little bit? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Close. The emergency was identified as repairs that are needed to be completed, hopefully before the Henry County 2019-2020 school year begins, August 1st of 2019. After we had the rains back in April, we looked at this culvert, it's a metal, existing metal culvert. We had to do some design, and it's going from one single metal eight-foot wide to two-barrel concrete culvert. Southeastern Site Development submitted a quote for the amount of 120,000 funds are available in the Stormwater Budget Department. Staff recommends to perfect the record approval of this emergency drainage replacement for Hempfield Road. Take any questions?
Okay, so we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Okay, the resolution passes unanimously. You may proceed to your final.
Thank you, Chair. Due to the pipe replacement on Hempfield, as mentioned, it's necessary for Henry County Water Authority to relocate a portion of their facilities since it's in the way. The estimated cost, which is 50% of the total relocation, is $19,783.95. Funding is available as well on the Stormwater Budget.
Okay, well, we've heard the presentation. It was related to the previous item. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Barn?
Yes, Rocky, are they going to go with the same size pipe that's there now? Are they going to increase the size?
They're going on the same size. They have already, actually, they've already put a valve on each side of the water line. The good thing about the water line was double-fit, so they're going, they already put the valve, so they're going to be able to cut off the line and be able to do the work and then reconnect again.
Okay, other questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion for approval.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? The resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now invite up Deputy Chief Jonathan Burnett to present a resolution from the Henry County Fire Department for the emergency repair of fire engine number eight.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members.
Good evening.
Tonight I come before you with a resolution to perfect the record for approving the emergency repair of engine eight for the Fire Department. On February the 25th of this year, engine eight was involved in a no-fault-for-us accident which caused the truck to be taken out of service. So tonight, the resolution is to perfect the record for approving the repair of engine eight.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions from the Board? I just have one, so I know this was an accident of no fault of ours, but is there insurance proceedings that's underway to...
Yes, ma'am. Our risk management department is working diligently with the insurance company on the side to get that reimbursement for those funds.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, the resolution has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the next resolution from our Fleet Services Department, and we invite up Mr. Jody Swartz to discuss a resolution approving a Henry County bid contract for fuels, including diesel and gasoline compliant formulas.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good evening.
This is a basic contract that was bid out by our purchasing department, bid number 1940. It's for our annual usage of diesel and gasoline fuel. We made a basic estimate, and they put a bid out, and we have reviewed the bids and are asking for Boswell Oil to be awarded the contract based on overall low, low bid. They bid, the little tabulation sheet is .008 of a discount and .008 cent of a discount, so you kind of get into it, it starts turning into portions of pennies for thousands of gallons, so.
Okay.
It's hard to explain, but if y'all need any...
Okay, so are there any questions from the Board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further comments? All in favor? Okay, it passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
We're now moving to our public hearing on community development, and this is to receive public comments on the proposed 2019 Annual Action Plan as part of the FY 2017-2019 Consolidated Plan. So we invite up Ms. Olivia McPherson, CDBG Specialist, and Ms. Shannon Señor, CDBG Director. So, good evening, ladies.
Good evening. The Community Development Department would like to present to you the draft 2019 Annual Action Plan for your approval to submit to HUD. The Annual Action Plan serves as a prerequisite to the county receiving its allocation. In preparing the Annual Action Plan, staff conducted a series of needs assessment meetings and held two application workshops. Staff has also used the Consolidated Plan as a guide to match yearly goals with the county's overall three-year goal plan. The expected 2019 allocation is $1,167,297. A cap of 15% of the total allocation is allowed for public services, and a cap of 25% is allowed for administrative costs and fair housing initiatives. The above slide shows our recommendation for projects. Some of our public facility recommendations include: the city of Hampton with West Main Street street improvements; the city of McDonough with the continuation of sidewalk improvements; the city of Stockbridge with the continuation of water and sewer improvements; both of the housing authorities with the continuation of modernization to units; Henry County with street and stormwater improvements; and Greenville community and residential rehab in the Rosenwald area in the city of Hampton, and a continuation of rehab in the Blacksfield area of the city of McDonough. Our public service recommendations include: Africa Children's Fund, a Friends House, Crosswalk, Connecting Henry, Flint Circuit Council on Family Violence, Hands of Hope Clinic, Southern Crescent Sexual Assault Center, and a small grants program which will be available to smaller nonprofits later on within fiscal year 19. We also have maps available that shows the project's locations, not included on these maps or the confidential locations. This concludes our presentation. We are happy to answer any questions you may have, and this is a public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Thomas?
Have all your funding been allotted to these particular areas thus far? Do you have any other funds available outside of this?
No, no, ma'am. We allocate to the full dollar amount as recommended by HUD.
Any other questions? Commissioner Thomas?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from other Board Members? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion. Oh, actually, this is a public hearing. So we, at this time, will allow those wishing to speak towards this presentation, this resolution, for a total of three minutes each. So at this time, we ask that you please come forward if you would like to make a public comment regarding this action plan. So at this time, we do welcome you to come forward.
Here's what I found on the web.
Coach, you please come forward, sir, I'm sorry. You please state your name, please.
I'm Peter Joseph Cabral, Rocky Creek Road. Are these negotiable? Are these in stone?
Okay, we'll respond to your question afterwards.
Okay. I would, I'm looking at it, public services operated, this is where I'm saying prioritization, scratch, that's $165,000 we could save. I don't understand the planning administrative, fair housing for Metro. I'm looking at Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity. How does that benefit everybody in Henry County? I don't see things, I see very few that are for, that are all of the respective citizens of Henry County. This is my argument, if it doesn't apply to everybody equally in the county, it should apply to none, and we should not fund it. That's the savings we can put toward those essential services that do affect and benefit all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward now.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Jones. I live at 848 Nevis Way in McDonough. When I look at this overview, and excuse my naivety or my ignorance, but it just seems like a big broad brush. So when I look at the city of McDonough sidewalk improvements, phases, what's that? Where? There's no breakdowns. There's just lump sum things being broken down. We're supposed to buy into something that we don't have any input in. We're supposed to buy into something that we have no understanding of. So when we talk about, for instance, rehab single-unit residential for $75,838, what does that entail? Where's the breakdown? Where's the itemization? This is just lump sum. This is not saying anything. When we're talking about public service operating support, if these are going to be, you know, things that we're supporting, we as a community should decide what we want to support and not be told or mandated, these are the things that we're going to support. This, again, I'm looking at a very, very broad brush. It's not telling me anything. So when we look at this annual action plan, and you're talking about an allocation of $1,167,297, where's that money coming from? Is that something that, again, that's going to be passed down to us as homeowners? Where's those funds coming from? So there's just too much here and not a breakdown or given an understanding of what we're seeing. You guys, as members and boards and chairmen, you know what you're looking at. We're laypeople. These breakdowns need to be shown to us as laypeople where we can understand, what are we looking at? That looks like just a bunch of numbers and some cute little things to me. Make me understand, and again, more importantly, where's this money coming from? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward now. Again, anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward now. Okay, well, this now concludes our public hearing, and I know there was a couple of questions, but this is also time to address the questions and also hear any comments from the Board, so, okay. Commissioner Thomas, I think you had a point that you wanted to make.
I just wanted, if she would, take a moment to explain the process, the application process, the deadlines as well, where the funding is coming from, how the administrative costs are set, so they can understand the process of how we got to this point, please.
Most definitely. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. In regards to the questions asked, please be aware that the Community Development Block Grant Program is federal funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Since 2012, Henry County has been an entitlement jurisdiction, which means we receive an annual allocation for the benefit of Henry County residents, primarily those of low to moderate income. The allocation this year being just over $1.1 million. We have done our plan. What we have before us is just a summary of how we have proposed to utilize those funds to benefit low to moderate income persons and all those in Henry County through this plan. The plan has been available for over 30 days for public review and comment. We have held needs assessment meetings. I believe Olivia shared that there were, I don't know if you gave a number, but it was about seven meetings over the course of this last year. The application process began in November of 2018 with applications due in February of 2019. So this has been a long process for which we have notified the public of the information made available. It's been online. Copies of the plan have been in public locations such as here in the administration building, the recreation centers, the public libraries, and various other facilities available for review. And I don't recall if I mentioned it, but also on the county's website. These particular activities have been presented by, to us, to the Community Development Department by nonprofit organizations and/or cities or departments here in the county to assist with the community development needs within our county, to benefit individuals such as households with housing rehab needs. And again, these funds would be to benefit those who are of low to moderate income, but also on the individual level, Hands of Hope Clinic, for example, it would be to serve for health and medical and dental, even, I believe, services for those who are uninsured or underinsured in our community. In regard specifically to the fair housing, that is a federal mandate of all jurisdictions receiving CDBG funds on an annual basis. Again, the fair housing as a mandate, we are permitted to use the federal grant funds so that we do not have to use general funds from the county. All that is presented here for the $1.1 million is federal funds that has been granted to Henry County. There's no request in our budget for general funds for any of these purposes. Additionally, the Planning Administration Fund, which is our bottom allocation or proposal, is the 25%, which we are capped at federally for the administration of the program. That goes to cover supplies, the salary costs of staff who carry out these activities throughout the year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Wilson?
I noticed that you have three of the four cities listed. So City of Locust Grove, they don't qualify, or how does that work?
The city of Locust Grove has a very small area that qualifies for the low to moderate income, and that is based on the U.S. Census Bureau's information by Census Track Block Group. However, we are in conversation with the city in developing activities and how they would be eligible and how we can meet that national objective. So we are continually in communication with the city manager in particular to discuss activities. We have funded one activity in the past with the city, but they have not requested funding in recent years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and one thing to, the itemization, is this information available on the website or some other way that they can reach? Could you explain how individuals can get the itemization of the details again?
Yes, ma'am. The plan is available in its current draft form on the county's website, and again, in various public facilities in printed copy. And the, each of the documents, excuse me, each of the proposed activities are documented in detail on who's providing the service, such as the nonprofits, how these services are going to benefit residents of Henry County. It also will lay out maps and the target areas for the public facility and infrastructure improvements, which are more of our capital improvement activities where individuals and residents will see change on the ground.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay, we've heard the presentation, we've had the public hearing and addressed questions and comments. The floor is now open for a motion regarding this action plan.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments or discussion? All in favor? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move into our planning and zoning items, and as it has already been announced, the public hearing, our planning and zoning item for MC 19-02, David Parker requesting a modification of zoning conditions for property located at 3249 Jodico Road in District Four has been tabled. We'll now move into the next item, which is public hearing, MC 1904, Eagle West requesting a modification of zoning conditions for property located at 848 Daly Mill Road, and that is in District Three, and we invite up Mr. Stacy Jordan-Rutisell for that presentation. So, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The request before you tonight is located at the entrance of the Daly, excuse me, the Renfro Business Park on Daly Mill Road. The property is owned M1, which would allow industrial-type uses. This map shows the aerial in vicinity to the other buildings within the Renfro Business Park. This is actually a picture of the new building which has been constructed. This grassy area is where the 75-foot buffer had been, and this 75-foot natural and enhanced buffer was, this requirement was placed on the property in 2002. The subject property itself is 2.6 acres. This survey shows the entire Renfro Business Park. This area designated as Track Two, which includes these two building sites, comprise our subject property, the 2.6 acres. However, the applicant's request is for the natural or enhanced buffer to be removed to allow for a 75-foot landscape strip to include the plantings that are indicated on this site plan here. So as you can see from the photograph, the buffer is simply in front of the building at the entrance. The natural enhanced buffer, and the photograph is in your exhibit books, remains in front of the second building. So the request is just for the 75-foot area in front of the new building. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request. We have noted that this is a detailed landscape plan. We've noted that it does appear to be very attractive, and staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the Board before we begin the public hearing? Okay, so thank you. We'll begin the public hearing, and at this time, those wishing to speak in favor will be given a total of 10 minutes to speak to the Board collectively as a group, and then, again, those wishing to speak in opposition collectively as a group will be granted 10 minutes. So at this time, we'll invite anyone wishing to speak in favor to please come forward and please state your name. Thank you. And please keep in mind if there may be others behind you. Thank you, sir.
My name's Jimmy Melton. Work for Renfro Construction Company. I represent Eagle West in this matter. Just want to appreciate the opportunity for us to present this landscape plan to you and look forward to your approval. If you have any questions specific about that, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so we'll hear from others and invite you back up. So thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Please come forward now.
Can I use the map here?
You can.
Okay. Sorry. Hi. I'm in favor of the Renfro project. My name's Robert Kolpak. My father owns a property at 235 Oakshores Drive. This picture is of Record One. We approved it about three years ago. They, I don't believe, kept up with the standards of, that is, it's basically a junkyard on Daly Mill. So as you're coming out of his neighborhood, going to Jodico, you see a junkyard. There wasn't supposed to be any tractor trailers near the street. They're on there. So anybody would feel free, but this would be, if we can do that beautification at Renfro, they've been an excellent neighbor. This would be excellent if we could have these tenants do the same.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Again, anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll now allow anyone wishing to speak in opposition to please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. Seeing none, hearing none, this now completes our public hearing. We'll invite the applicant back up so that any questions or comments from the Board can So we've heard the presentation and public hearing comments. Are there any comments from the Board? Commissioner Barn?
I'd like one comment. I actually took a tour of site out here and met with Jimmy and Scott about this project, and the Powell Heinz was an issue out there, the reason it was kind of took out, but this is a great landscaping plan, and I think it's going to enhance the community.
Okay, are there any questions or other comments from the Board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, the zoning definitely passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
By unanimous approval. Thank you. So we're now moving to the next planning and zoning item. This one, too, is in District Three, and this is MC 1905, NS Holding requesting a modification of zoning conditions for property located west of Foster Drive and east of Interstate 75. And we invite up the, Ms. Nievez, I'm sorry, to make the presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members.
Good evening.
The request before you tonight concerns property located... The request before you tonight concerns property located to the west of Foster Drive, east of Interstate 75. The subject property is Zoned C3 Highway Commercial and was zoned in 2008 for the purposes of a hotel. The subject property is within and would form part of the Shopsett Henry Crossing The applicant is requesting to eliminate one zoning condition, which is zoning condition number seven, which is highlighted in bold and in italics on the screen of the 2008 original rezoning so that the subject property may be developed as an extended stay hotel, specifically an extended stay hotel as per the applicant's letter of intent. The property was rezoned previous to the adoption of the ULDC. The ULDC allows hotels to provide cooking facilities by right within the C3 zoning district. Furthermore, the ULDC does not distinguish between standard short-stay hotels and extended or long-stay hotels. And additionally, all other conditions placed on the property at time of rezoning, so that would be a total of eight, would remain effective. That being said, staff recommends approval of the applicant's request, and I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, we'll begin the public hearing aspect of this, and at this time, we'll invite the applicant and anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this will be granted a total of 10 minutes, and then likewise, a group of individuals who would like to speak in opposition will be granted a total of 10 minutes as well. So, at this time, we'll invite those wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, to please come forward now. And if you will state your name, please.
Hi, my name's Blake Hyman. I'm Representative NS Holdings, and may I? So, I've had the pleasure of actually sitting with a couple of people here that are not in favor of our project, and I appreciate that because, you know, we want good neighbors and we want the opportunity to speak to our neighbors, but in turn, be good neighbors. And so, I represent TGC Hospitality, and we're out of Wichita, Kansas, and develop hotels across the country, and, you know, our desire here is to build a hotel that's beneficial to the neighborhood and the community and comparable to the Home Two Suites and the La Quinta ended suites across the highway. You know, our intention here is to make an investment of upwards of $15 million into the McDonough community, and, you know, we believe a good investment for the neighbors and the community as a whole, and, you know, also enhance a current field. You know, our intended guests, I know the extended stay name can also, can get a bad rap and get a bad perception, but I'm staying at the Home Two Suites tonight, which is also an extended stay, and so the hotel caters to a whole variety of demand. You know, our intended customers are corporate travelers, traveling nurses, you know, families that want the larger room to spread out and, you know, not be cramped up in a small hotel room and, you know, take advantage of that. And so, you know, I welcome any conversation with neighbors and look forward to your support, and let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. At this time, anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Again, anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. So, at this time, we'll invite those wishing to speak, a total of 10 minutes in opposition, to please come forward now. And again, if you'll please state your name, would be great.
Good evening. My name is John Anderson. I serve as the pastor at Pinecrest Baptist Church on 175 Foster Drive. I'm here with several of the folks from our church, and I asked them to stand for just a moment if you're here tonight, folks from our church and some from our community, our Christian school. Pinecrest Baptist Church is a church that has almost 1,000 members on the roll. We have a Christian school with almost 900 students, 450 are on our campus, the other 450 are on our west campus, and we are so thankful for the privilege to be in Henry County. I thank you all for doing such a great job. I know this is a tough job when you're managing a growing community, and I know just by general of my job how it is working with people every day, and so I really appreciate so very much your heart in this matter. Our desire as a church is to impact our community positively, and we have made a commitment as a church since 2004, when we relocated, to be a part of Henry County. The majority of our membership lives in Henry County, and we all want to stay in Henry County. We appreciate so much all that this county affords to us and what it means to us. Having said that, with the safety issue with hotel and extended stay hotel, we are very concerned about having an extended stay hotel that close to our property. As you already know, that part of Henry County and that part of Jonesboro Road is already a magnet for crime. Just this last week, Verizon on Sunday afternoon at 2:00 was held up. On Tuesday of last week, Jonesboro Road, AT&amp;T was held up. Saturday, the Outback Steakhouse up on Eagles Landing was held up. We already have a crime issue. I understand this is a beautiful rendering. I appreciate so much the effort that's gone into it, but having traveled and preached in almost every state in our country and seen extended stay hotels, America, this very brand, I can tell you that after two years, they do not look like this, and this will be something that I'm very concerned for our church. I'm very concerned for the safety of our children. That's the main reason. I'm very concerned about the neighborhood. We have great neighbors that live right behind us, and we're very concerned about the children there. We have a Gym Tech, a very good relationship with a gymnastic club there. We're very concerned about their safety. I'm cordially asking the Commissioner and cordially asking the Chair to vote this down. Thank you again for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Maria Matheson, and I am the owner of Gym Tech. I am a single mother of four who, just recently, I've been in business for 10 years, offering gymnastics and several athletic programs for children in the last 10 years at the property of 175 Kendra Drive. I'm currently one of the top 10 rated summer camp and school camp programs that's offered to children for parents while they're working. We've grown tremendously. Parents trust us and feel like we provide a safe environment and location for their children. I'm very concerned about this. These type of places bring in those who don't qualify for a home or a community, can bring in child pedophilers, can bring in those that might have a criminal background. It is a very huge concern with the children that I have coming in and out of my facility. I offer birthday parties. We're in business doing things from 7:00 a.m. in the morning all the way till 9:00 o'clock at night. Be concerned with my staff. Like he mentioned, there's already been several crime in that area, and I just feel like this is going to only bring more crime to that area. I just don't think this is a great thing for our community. I've invested 1.2 million into my property there and want to continue to build a great, safe place for children. Like he said, Creekside School, I do a lot of partnering with them, where children come back and forth to our facility. The neighborhood that sits just past our facility, we do a Saturday night open gym where children have become comfortable, where they can come down to our facility and actually spend three hours of open gym play at the facility as well. I just feel like this would not bring a safe group of, a group of people that would be safe for our children to be around. So, with that being said, I would like you to consider to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We've heard from business owners. We've heard from the pastor.
Did you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Veronica on Nevis Way. So, when the pastor speaks about the neighboring communities, they're talking about the subdivision that I personally live in. We, as a community, have talked about this. For the last eight to 10 years, I do 80% travel at extended stay hotels, from your Embassy Suites to your extended stays to your Home Two Suites. I can second his emotion, saying, "They look beautiful at first." They don't stay that way. This is our community. To have those types of hotels that close to our homes, that hotel would be in the opening coming into our subdivision. You have to pass the church to get to our subdivision. As the pastor stated, we've had break-ins, we've had burglars, we've had other things. We're kind of nestled and tucked back, and if we're having the issues that we're having right now, being that nestled and tucked back, to bring in a whole other entourage of people, different types of people, it's not just to say that someone that is displaced or underprivileged will be there. That's not the point. The point is, is bringing in a lot more foot traffic, is bringing in a lot more congestion, is bringing in a lot more awareness to the areas that's back there, and so it's bringing in a safety issue. First and foremost, we're looking at safety. Secondly, we're looking at keeping the values of our homes going up, not coming down, and we believe that an extended stay type entity that close to our subdivision is going to make our property values and our safety issues. So, our property values will go down, and our safety issues are going to be going up. So, I'm totally, totally opposed to an extended stay that close to our subdivision.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lillian Alvarez. I am a member of the Annenberg HOA Board, and I live at 309 Mango Court.
And good evening. My name is Deborah Sykes. I'm also a resident. I reside at 845 Nevis Way, McDonough, Georgia, in the Annenberg community and also a board member. First of all, Veronica, thank you so much for first addressing the concerns of our community. Not to restate, you know, what she stated, but of course, we do very much have concerns as it pertains to safety. To date, our community has been hit aggressively with car break-ins. We've had one home invasion so far. We are extremely concerned with the safety issues and share, you know, we're neighbors to the church as well as the gym. I'm going to tell you guys, this is a hu, this is a bad idea. You know, we do not need the additional foot traffic as well as, you know, just the influx of people in that area. You know, we made that financial investment in our businesses and, as well as in our homes to have a, to be safe, but also from a board perspective, we're in a, we're in a really tight position because our community members are at arms about this. They're asking us to gate our communities. Homeowners right now have an annual assessment of $600 to ensure that members feel safe in their homes. If we gate the community, that can be anywhere from 50,000 to 60,000, maybe $80,000 investment. That in turn is going to increase the assessments from anywhere from 600 to $1,000. We don't want to put homeowners in that predicament, but we are going to very much stay focused on the safety of our community, and I just really ask you to consider not approving this rezoning initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Angela Garner, and I live at 344 Mango Court. I live, you know, where they live at, and I'm opposed to the extended stay also because I feel like extended stay should not be that close to a residential area where there's children. It's going to bring trash, trashy in the neighborhood. Like the lady said, it's going to bring the value down in the home, and it's going to bring the crime rate up. And I, like they said, I'm thinking about my safety first. I don't care about all the numbers and all of that. I just, I don't think that that would be, I'm opposed, so I hope you are, too. Thanks.
Thank you. We have 13, 11 seconds. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Bianca Brown. I live in Annenberg subdivision 970 Nevis Way, and I want to add, I agree with all of everyone else in the subdivision, but I would like to add that...
I'm sorry, we've just expired out of time, but I think you just made your point, so thank you. I'm sorry.
I want to say they're vacating.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for your comments. So, at this time, we'll invite the applicant back up, and that concludes our public hearing aspect of this zoning matter, and we'll allow the board to definitely address any questions or comments at this time. So, any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
I just want to say for the residents that are here today, the extended stay is on here, but I think this area is still zoned for a hotel, and this is why it's so important that you all know who your commissioners are, know who serves you, come to these meetings. Don't wait because this is already zoned for a hotel. So, even if the extended stay doesn't happen today, it's zoned for a hotel. I have the same sentiments that you guys have about safety, about a hotel being in our residential areas. So, you've got to get on top of this and stay on top of this and come to these meetings, know who your commissioners are, and get ahead of the game. So, I just want to make sure you guys know this.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barnes?
Yeah. Commissioner Clemens is absolutely right. It was zoned back in 2008, and the commissioners at that time, thank goodness, put this stipulation in there to eliminate extended stays, so, and that's a good thing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we deny the request to eliminate Condition Seven for extended stay hotel.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Third. All right, any questions or comments additionally from the board? All in favor to deny. The zoning is denied. So, we thank you for that, and we'll now move into our next item in public hearing, MC MDP 1903, was announced that it was requested to be removed from the agenda, and that one was in District One. So, we'll now move into the next item, which is our financial services update, and inviting up Mr. David Smith to please come forward to present a resolution authorizing staff to solicit proposals for disparity study regarding the Henry County's disadvantaged business enterprise.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, and the Henry County community. What you have for your approval is a resolution to authorize staff to solicit proposals for disparity study to examine utilization and availability of minority and women-owned business enterprises and any disadvantaged business enterprises on our Henry County contracts. Just a little background, we currently have a DBE plan and policy, but it exists for our transit and airport is in compliance with 49 CFR Part 26. The goal here is to expand that existing DBE policy to contracts that may have been excluded to promote and ensure equal opportunity for participation in our public works, roads, and transportation. Staff is recommending that a disparity study be the first step to have a program that encourages such participation. What questions do you have?
Okay, so we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? The resolution passes unanimously for the study. Thank you. We're now moving to the next item from our county attorney, Patrick Jockstetter, and this is a resolution to regulate and provide for the calling of an election to determine whether the Board of Commissioners of Henry County shall be authorized to allow the consumption of alcohol on premises from 11:00 a.m. until 12:00 midnight on Sundays.
Well, I'll address that briefly. So, as you may be aware, in 2018, the Georgia Legislature approved what's commonly referred to as the Georgia Brunch Bill, which authorizes local governments who already permit Sunday sales of alcoholic beverages beginning at 12:30 to move that time up to 11:00 a.m., hence the name Brunch Bill. Henry County currently authorizes the sale of alcoholic beverages on Sundays beginning at 12:30. In order to extend those hours to begin at 11:00 a.m., this Board of Commissioners must approve a resolution, which I presented to you tonight, to present to the voters a referendum. The question on that referendum will be whether or not Henry County should allow the service of alcoholic beverages from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. because you already authorized alcoholic beverages from 12:30 p.m. on. So, that's what's before you today. If the board approves a resolution, this will appear on the ballot during the November elections.
Okay. Well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay? Hearing none. Seeing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And second. Any further questions or comments from the board? All in favor? Okay, all in favor? Okay, I think that was five. Any opposed? Oh, one. Okay, so five to one. Thank you. Okay, we did make a note that the item 12A was removed from the agenda as requested, and so we're now moving to our public comment section. So at this time, we'll look to the county clerk. Do we have any, anyone that registered for public comments today?
Yes, Chair, we have two tonight. Robert Kolpak and Jan Adams.
Okay, thank you. So at this, the time where we allow those who pre-registered before the meeting to sign up for public comment, each individual will be given five minutes to speak uninterrupted, and so at this time, we'll begin with the very first individual who signed up, and again, if you will come forward at this time.
Chair. Robert Kolpak, 999 Fairview Road, also 272 Cotton Indian Creek Road.
Okay, thank you.
Started this process on 1035 Fairview Road. It's, I'll send, put you a picture here. Property looked like that from the street. You could see, from, from my vision, I could see roof damage, and since it was my next door neighbor, I went and checked out the property, and that's what I discovered when I went behind the property. There's two structures that looked the, the same way. I've been advised that it was flood damage that caused the damage to this property, and a little concerning because you can see roof damage and ceiling fans. I don't know that floodwater would get that high, and you get into the property and there's no telltale sign of flood damage. The tiles would be ripped and cabinets would be destroyed or at least colored. Goes along with two other properties that are, that's right in front of the Hidden Valley Park near our senior center, that's still existing. Not sure why, you know, we cannot improve that since April. I've, I've been, emails, numerous emails, about 41 correspondence between Kayla and myself, you know, asking when's, they're going to put a dump truck, when they're going to clear it back to regular, you know, grass. This is a eyesore for the county, for myself. Renters talking about maybe moving out. If I go to sell, this would not look good on a, with an appraiser. Would anybody agree with that? My question that I've asked that I have not got answered is, who dropped the ball on it, and who's going to be accountable for it? It's never been answered in any of my emails back to me. The, I understand I've been communicated with, and that is great, but we, we just put a thing up just a second ago for fiscal year 2019, 71, there's $71,000 worth of repairs. We put $5,000 in these roofs. There would have been three properties all in tow, which was 873 Fairview Road and 613 Spraggons Memorial. They were brick homes. I'm not sure why they were burned, why they were considered surplus, and why they would have been considered flood damage. One other property that I s, go ahead.
I'm sorry, please continue.
Speak up.
I'm sorry, please continue.
Okay. So there's another property that I sent in on the, I talked to you guys last meeting, it was like CC Click Fix, and I put that prop, that property up, and it's a commercial property in Stockbridge, Georgia. I was kicked back that it's City of Stockbridge. My problem with that is, again, another, another eyesore with the county, that, not sure how we get it fixed, but abandoned vehicles, things haven't been moved, the property is in disrepair. I would just like to maybe make some, you know, groundwork on the, that we improve some of the stuff we do as our county with some rules and regulations, or at least follow-up on them. And we roll it to, this is a city property, City of Stockbridge. I talked to the City of Stockbridge. They said their hands are tied. I'm just wanting to improve my county. But right now, I know of four properties that I've seen that are pretty rough on a main road. This would not be county property, but still needs a little attention. And that's all I was asking is if I could, who would I speak to? Because code enforcement doesn't enforce the county properties. I had to go to Ms. Matthews to find out how to get this fixed. I do know the CC Click Fix app now, but that's still not getting much traction. So who, who would be accountable for these three properties that were on Fairview, but at least 1035 Fairview Road where I know that the damage was apparent roof damage?
Okay, we're going to let him finish, and then we're going to respond. So, are you done, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so...
Sheri, can you address, because I know we had the property down off of Bowden Road in Fairview, where I had to ask you guys to, to clean that up. The first property that, that he addressed, was, is that one of the properties that we tore down?
Yes, the 1035 property is the property we've been in contact with you, with. There should be a sign that's placed on the property that says Fire Department Training because we are using it as a training facility. My last correspondence with our fire department is that we were waiting to receive a live fire permit, so I put a note to check on the status of that permit. I've submitted a request to our fire department to determine the status of the live fire permit, but I do believe our staff has been in consultation with you regarding the status of this property. Now, in terms of the other properties, those are located within the city limits of Stockbridge, and so the county would have no control over those parcels.
So what are, give me a timeline on when we expect to have that, the initial property cleaned up?
Just Commissioner, we have a D O T, have a work order put in. Soon the trucks, the trucks move to that side, put on our rotation, we'll have it cleaned up and have all that debris removed and that building destroyed.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Holmes, what I was asking is, the property, the first property, that was, they were told, Ms. Matthews group said that was flood damage. I, I showed pictures, and I was asked in the email not to go on the property anymore, but it was, it wasn't flood damage. It was somebody didn't repair the roof, and I'm wondering, the three properties that are in right around the Hidden Valley Park, were they the same? The two of them, I'm not sure of because they were already bulldozed, but they haven't been cleared.
They were county property. We're used to a fire department training. The holes in the roof were cut. There was water damage, and, and water had got inside the old structures and deemed irreparable. They were county properties. The board did surplus them and abandoned the properties, and it gave permission to destroy them, to remove them.
So can we, can we address his issues?
Yes, sir, we're getting cleaned up. Well, definitely.
Appreciate it.
We've, we've actually articulated that back. We'll, we'll make sure we get it, Commissioner.
Okay.
That's all I was looking for, is that when, when it would be officially cleared up?
That's... All right, thank you, sir. Okay, we have one other public comment, and again, will be granted a total of five minutes to that uninterrupted time for that constituent, and then of course, if there's any follow-up, we'll follow up afterwards. Thank you. Okay? Give your name, please.
Yes. Good evening, Chair and board members. My name is Dr. Jan Adams. I am a physical therapist. I reside at 1103 Edward Drive in McDonough. I've been blessed to provide physical therapy services for our children who are now young adults with special needs in Henry County for over, almost 25 years. In my spare time, I serve on the Board of the Directors for the Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center. I'm here this evening wearing both hats. On behalf of my fellow members from the Kinsley Grace Foundation, we would like to say thank you. We were absolutely delighted to hear that the board has taken interest and has heard the citizens express their desire to have an aquatic facility in Henry County. We appreciate your consideration, as you did at your last meeting, for the north-south swimming pools. There are a couple of issues that we would like to bring forth to you. A smaller facility, which would be an $11 million facility, as you had proposed, would be similar to what Clayton County has, and I'd like to talk to you about the concerns that we have with that. As you know, this project for the Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center has been ongoing for many, many years. We have done extensive research, extensive feasibility studies. A small facility would allow you to provide a swimming pool. Now, this would help the citizens, the, the students in the school system on the swim teams, but this would not provide an indoor heated pool with a zero entry and a lift access to help our children with special needs, to help our senior citizens with mobility problems, and to help any citizen with a neuromuscular disorder who requires a heated swimming pool. The, the smaller pools, and especially if you do a north-south, I'd like you to consider that what you're presenting are two facilities, and that's two times the insurance cost, two times your operating cost, two times your water, your chemical, and your maintenance cost, and you don't have a facility that would be large enough to provide returns to support the, the swimming pools. The Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center is a center. It is a complex. If you've ever seen the complex at Georgia Tech on their campus, it is only 500 seats smaller than the Georgia Tech complex. With 1,800 seats in our proposed complex, we can host swim meets. Swim meets are big money for the county. These swim meets attract sometimes 1,000 swimmers, times parents, times grandparents, times siblings who stay in our hotels, who buy our food here, who buy gas here, and provide revenue for the aquatic center. What we are proposing is a facility that is large enough to attract swim meets, regional swim meets, and, and this brings money into the facility and doesn't become a burden on the taxpayers. So I want to reiterate, we are delighted, absolutely delighted, that you are considering the aquatic center. I serve as Secretary for the Board of Directors, and unbeknownst to me, that means that my private email is tied into the voicemails that come in to the Kinsley Grace aquatic phone number listed online. Over Memorial Day weekend, I received 143 emails. Those are our citizens who are calling, who want to know where their child can have swim lessons. There are seniors that are calling that want to know about our water aerobic classes. So the interest is there. I can personally attest to that. We're a growing county. We need to provide what other counties provide to their citizens, but let's do it in a manner that's not going to be taxing to the citizens. Let's give them what they need and make this a facility that is world-class. We're going to be proud of it. It's going to be self-supporting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So that concludes our public hearing. So at this time, we'll just open the floor for any Commissioner comments at this time. Commissioner Clemmons?
Sheri, I've been hearing a lot of information about this Kinsley Grace Aquatic Center. I know it's a private group that's been raising money for years. Do we have any idea how much money they've already raised for the aquatic center?
Commissioner Clemmons, about six to eight months ago, myself and Patrick had a conversation with a representative from Kinsley Grace.
I can't hear you.
Commissioner.
Thank you.
About six to eight months ago, there's, there was some conversation with representatives from the Kinsley Grace Group, and if I remember correctly, the number was about $200,000 that had been raised. Again, I'm just going off of memory, but that's the number that I remember being provided to the county.
Do, how long have they been raising it, money?
At least five years.
So it looks like they want to try to do a partnership with the county, and if that's the case, we really need to see how we can work with them on raising more money, or putting some other community members behind them to raise more money, to help with the private group, and we need to make sure that, you know, that the public understands that the aquatic centers that we've been talking about for the county are county facilities and not the Kinsley Grace private aquatic center.
Understood. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barron?
Yes, Sheri. You heard some comments tonight about Rec. 1 maybe in violation. I would like for you to get with the planning and zoning and the code enforcement and, and do a site visit, and, and if they're not in compliance, we need to get them in compliance.
Absolutely. I had it in my notes as of tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commissioners? Okay. Seeing none. Hearing none. We'll now move into any comments from the county managers team.
Sheri, board, I just want to remind the citizens that we do have our application open at this time for their second session of our Henry County Citizens Academy. I know there were a lot of questions posed tonight regarding the millage and the budget, and so I just invite citizens to participate in the class because it does give you an opportunity to really learn about county government, and we do dive into how we develop our budget, how the millage rate is set, but also you get an opportunity to interact with the number of departments within the organization. So that information is available on the county's website, and we are certainly looking for citizens to participate in this upcoming class.
Okay, thank you. So regarding our upcoming meeting and events, on tomorrow at 10 o'clock a.m. is a called Board of Commissioners meeting to discuss and approve the county's SPOS 5 project list, and then on July the 29th at 9 o'clock is a special called Board of Commissioners meeting to discuss and approve the resolution calling for a SPOS 5 referendum and to consider and approve intergovernmental agreement with the cities for distribution of SPOS 5 proceeds. On August the 1st at 10 o'clock a.m. is a called meeting regarding the final millage public hearing and the adoption of the millage rate. On August the 6th at 9 o'clock a.m. is a regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. So at this time, if there's no further business for the board, we are now called for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Consider ourselves adjourned. Good evening, and thank you all for tuning in and attending the meeting tonight.